I now call order the regular session meeting of the Board of Commissioners of the City of Tarpon Springs on Tuesday, February 4th, 2014 at 6:30. Roll call?
Mayor Archie.
Here.
Vice Mayor Slattery.
Here.
Commissioner Larson.
Here.
Commissioner Terapani.
Here.
Commissioner Banther.
Here.
Tonight's invocation will be given by Reverend Larry Black, Florida Hospital North, Pinellas. Will everyone stand? Please remain standing for the pledge allegiance following.
Let us pray. Father, your word says that righteous is the nation whose God is the Lord, and we can say that for this city, that you would be the God of Tarpon Springs, that you would bless defiant officers and public officials who lead out and direct the business for this community. We ask for your guidance and direction, Lord, and that you would continue to lead us into this new year that has come upon us, that great things may happen during this year. We ask that you would bless the young people in this city who are looking for guidance. May these men and women here this evening give them the guidance they need. Bless all that is said and done this evening, Lord, and again, bless this nation of ours. We ask in your holy name, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice as strong.
We will now go to public comments on any item that will not be discussed this evening. Please come forward, state your name and address for the record.
Christopher Boski, 1602 Gulf Beach Boulevard, Tarpon Springs, 34689. Today on Bay News 9, I saw a report that Duke Energy plans to continue its tax on businesses and homes in Florida for the next four years. That's four more years that Duke Energy is claiming that it is going to take money in our electric bill, out of our pocket, for a nuclear power plant they've already admitted they will never build. They will never build it, and yet they are charging each and every one of us for that. As a city, we must stand up and let them know that we will not put up with this. We can begin holding workshops and get the Florida Municipal Electric Association to give presentations to the city to show us alternatives. We do not have to put up with this. Our franchise agreement with the electric monopoly expires in six years, but we cannot wait six years to start talking about this. We have to start now so that they know that we're serious six years from now. Then they'll get it, that we don't have to buy energy from them, so they can't get away with stealing from our customers, their customers, our residents, and our business owners. Now, in 1960, then Florida Power used to pay for our streetlights. In 1990, when that franchise agreement was made, they removed that. So we now pay. We pay for the streetlights, when the electric company used to pay for that. So we can demand things like that to get our money back. And as a city, we can do this by standing firm, standing strong. We have to start now. We could buy electric from TECO. The transmission lines cross right at the Keystone Corridor. Negotiations could begin now. We can create a municipal electric company here in Tarpon Springs, and then buy electric from whoever we want until we produce our own. And it doesn't have to be all or nothing. This has been done in Winter Park, Florida, and other places. There are currently more than 30 municipal electric companies in the state of Florida now. This is something we must do, and we have to stand up now. We cannot wait till the last minute. We can't wait until it shows up on the agenda and then figure it out there when they've already crafted a contract. You know, four more years of stealing. They've been taking this, you know, it was Senate Bill 888 passed in 2006 that allowed them to do this, advance cost recovery. It's a tax on your electric bill. It's a hidden tax, so even business owners are paying this tax for nothing. You get nothing in return. At least the rate hike on insurance rates, they can sort of find a way to justify that, but there's no justification of this. I can't believe that you all aren't and that everyone in this town isn't standing on the rooftops screaming about this. They're taking your money and telling you that they're giving you nothing for it, and that they never will. It's a tax that returns nothing to you. It's time we stood up as a city and let them know that we're not going to take it, and then all the other cities throughout Florida can do the same. Thank you.
Peter Lackus, 514 Ashland Avenue. Before I get into what I wanted to speak about, very profound what we just heard. There are municipal utility, electric utilities. We have a firm, they could look into our current contracts, see if any of Duke Energy's actions having shift corporations. Possibly there's an out clause. That document's this thick. I'm sure there's probably all kinds of out clauses to maybe accelerate this. But something was mentioned earlier also was workshops. And on this commission of late, for a number of months, you look online, you see all the dates for the meetings coming up, to a month, to a month. I haven't seen hardly a workshop in a long time. And what are workshops? They're opportunities for the board, the staff, and the citizens to come together and speak about an issue, an issue of importance. So, not to beat a dead horse, but last week's meeting with regards to the development staff reorganization could have been handled in a workshop where various parties were invited to give their input prior to some decision having been put forth that caused consternation among all. So I would implore this board, if they have issues they would like the public to comment on, to have more workshops, to open up more so we can discuss some of these items. As we mentioned at that meeting, we feel that there should be someone dedicated to an environmental aspect in the city. This has long been needed. And as far as the reorganization, I feel that, as I mentioned to Mark the other day when we spoke, there are ways you can put together a staff person between, and what I thought about after talking to you, Mark, I'm gonna put it out right now, a park ranger, someone who's in charge of all the parks, they do all the environmental studies, they verify all the environmental studies for many developers groups, they do the hydrology, they are in charge of all the parks. So you can share the funds between those various departments to support somebody. And my last thought was, in all the transitions over to the building inspectors, I didn't see anywhere in the diagram someone who was going to do all the engineering stuff. Lastly, that's not my beeper, is it? I got another minute or something. Okay. I'd like to read something from the code 2-138, public comments. "The city manager shall note on the agenda, and the mayor shall inform members of the public, and no speaker shall have the right to address the board of commissioners for more than four minutes on any particular item. Members of the public present in the meeting may donate their time to a speaker to extend the speaker's time, but such donation shall forfeit the donor's right to speak. Speaker shall identify the persons who have donated their speaking time. Each donation shall extend the speaker's time an additional two minutes, and no event shall the speaker's time be extended beyond 10 minutes of total speaking time. Any deviation from this rule must be approved by the consensus of a majority of the board, but no vote need be taken to waive this requirement." When you look online on the agenda, these public comment information is there, but when you get the paper one, there's no information to the public who would be speaking about the public comment rules. So, I know it used to be on there, and I know you got the Athenian oath there to honor Jesse, but Jesse's honor would be memorialized by people knowing how they have the ability to speak out. Thank you.
Are there any other public comments? Seeing then we'll go to our proclamations. Item number one is Black History Month. This proclamation reads, "City of Tarpon Springs, Florida, whereas in 1926, Dr. Cottage Woodson, a Harvard scholar, established the observance of African-American history with the view to revealing the contributions, achievement, involvement of African-American people in the development of American democracy. And whereas the history of some of us is the history of all of us, and our history is what shapes us as a state, as a nation, and whereas we must acknowledge and pay tribute to the generations of our citizens who have struggled with adversity, risked their lives for justice, fought a fight that at times seemed impossible to win, and preserved and continued to fight for equality and the American dream. Whereas we see African-Americans engaged throughout our society as friends, neighbors, scholars, teachers, business people, community leaders, and contributors to our quality of life. Whereas Black History Month encourages all to come together, reflect on our collective past, and reveal its impact on present conditions. Now therefore, I, David Archie, by virtue of authority vested me as mayor of the City of Tarpon Springs, hereby proclaim the month of February 2014 as Black History Month." With that, we'll go to our presentations. Item number two, our introduction of teen counts has been deferred to March 4th. So we go to item number three, Tarpon Springs Police Department, K-9 presentation. It's, Chief, are you gonna handle that, or your sister chief, Dobie?
I guess we'll all handle it. Thank you, Mayor, Commissioners, Chief Cochran. Here to talk tonight about one of our awesome units, and that's our K-9 unit. With us, with me tonight, we have Captain Templeton, who oversees operations. We have another member of our family that you all know, Mr. Tom Dobie's, and he's been a contributor to our K-9 unit in the past. We have Officer Wen and our K-9 Dobies. He also goes by the training name of Ernie, but he is, he's just an awesome dog. He's been on the job for six months, and even though he's four-legged and he understands German, he's definitely a part of our family. I just want to do a quick presentation for you, and then the dog's gonna do a demonstration. I'll turn everything over to Captain Templeton. Just talk a little bit about what a K-9 unit is. Obviously, it's a specialized unit that basically enhances our ability to do our job. The dog is definitely an asset to the department and to the community. Commonly in police work, you'll see really two kinds of dogs. One is the German Shepherd, and the other is the Belgian Malinois. Those are the two most common dogs you'll see. Dobie's is a German Shepherd. This is kind of interesting, because these dogs are on the front lines, they're in the trenches, you know, with the officers, but canines have been killed in the line of duty, as you see in 2012, 18 have been killed, 2013, 17 have been killed, and in 2014, we're up to four. So these dogs definitely go in harm's way. And with that, Florida has actually enacted state statutes that protect these dogs. As you can see, under 843-19, it's a felony to cause death or great bodily harm to a canine. It's a felony to use a deadly weapon against a dog, and there are misdemeanors involving if you touch or strike the dog intentionally, cause injury, or interfere with the dog in the performance of its duty. So Florida law definitely recognizes what these dogs do. Police canine training, anytime you do a unit like this, there's a lot of logistics that go behind it, a lot of training. Initially, we get the dog through a specific handler. Most of them come from Europe. Once they match the trainer with the dog, they have to go through 16 weeks of intense training, and the training is very intense. These dogs cost anywhere from $8,500 to $9,500, $10,000, and we have the fortunate ability to use all of our forfeiture funds to not only fund the dog, but all the costs that go along with the dog, the food, the veterinarian, equipment for the vehicle. So this unit is fully funded by forfeiture funds and not taxpayer dollars. Just a picture of Tommy, a dog in front of the building, you know, different things that he does with the dog. We constantly train this dog. We're connected to Pasco County, Pinellas County, Clearwater. We all train together, we all utilize each other's services. So this unit expands beyond Tarpon Springs. Canine sense of smell versus a human. Dog's sense of smell is about 1,000 to 10,000 times more sensitive than a human's, depending on the breed. That's pretty amazing. A human has about 5 million scent glands compared to a dog, which has anywhere from 125 million to 300 million, depending on the breed. So if you're trying to hide from one of these dogs, it's probably not going to work out too well for you. This is Tommy again in front of the police department. He's constantly training with the dog. They are a team, there's a major connection between a canine handler and a dog. There's just no doubt about that. They work as a team every night out there on the street. Some of the functions of a K-9 unit, they do search and rescue, cadaver detection, criminal apprehension, arson detection, narcotics detection, explosives detection, SWAT support. You won't see every canine that has all these disciplines, because it's just too much, but we can do two or three without a problem. But each one of these disciplines is an amazing amount of training and dedication. Community relations, we have the dog out at every event that we can to interact with the community. It's a great way, you know, to demonstrate the value of this unit to the community, to our city, and what this dog can do. Again, another picture. That one on the left is actually a call, the other one's out in front of the police department. Now Dobie's has been on the job for six months, so he's a young dog, but he's an amazing dog. He's probably one of the best we've ever had so far. But in six months, he's had eight criminal apprehensions and one firearm recovery. If you look at his incidents, first day after canine school, one felony suspect was apprehended, and the firearm he discarded was located. Suspect was apprehended after a suspect realized canine had tracked him, and he surrendered before the canine confronted him. Everyone thinks, oh, a canine's gonna bite someone. The vast majority of times, they're gonna surrender. They don't want to deal with the dog. And they have all kinds of training that go with that. Sometimes a bite doesn't, does occur. That's sometimes a part of doing a job, but it is justified when it does happen. Two burglary suspects were tracked over half a mile, half a mile, to their residence after being spotted by a witness trying to break in a home. This dog, in training, tracked a perpetrator a mile, one mile. That's pretty amazing. And, you know, that was intense training where they were running. You know, the officer actually ran a mile, hit on top of a building. This dog tracked him and circled the building and sat down, and they knew he was up there. That's a pretty amazing feat. Barricaded subject surrendered after barricading himself for over six hours when he realized the canine was unseen and about to be released to him. We don't want to confront people when they barricade. We have the SWAT team go out there, we negotiate with them. This gentleman, all we had to do was bring the dog to the front door and bark very loud for a good period of time, and he came out unharmed. Assisted Pasco Sheriff's Office and the apprehension of suspects, we network with all these other agencies. If we need help from Pasco, they're coming down. Same with Pinellas, same with Clearwater, other jurisdictions. Our dogs are always interacting. You'll see, especially during Epiphany, we have Tampa's bomb dogs over here. These are some of the events that we do. This was the opening of the dog parts, which Dobie's greatly appreciates, by the way. So we'll bring him out to events, and, you know, he's usually pretty much a really good success with the public, especially the kids. They love to watch what the dog does. And, you know, with that, that's Tommy again, and that's Dobie's. He's definitely a neat dog, and I'm gonna turn this over to Captain Templeton, and we'll get into a quick demonstration for you so you can see the dog in action. Thank you.
Just following up with what the chief said, the dogs, sometimes police dogs have a reputation of being ferocious, but actually, this dog is very, very friendly. That's why he can come to our community events. And the only time that he actually does go after anyone is when Officer Wen commands him to do so, and it's always usually a felony suspect during that time. And just a word about Officer Wen, he is one of our officers that just gives 150%. He works hard all the time, even before he was part of the K-9 team, and he comes in often when he's supposed to be off duty, when patrol needs him, and they call him. He comes out in the daytime when he should be sleeping. So, you know, kudos to him. And also, I wanted to thank Mr. Tom Dobie's. If it wasn't for him, then we wouldn't have a K-9 unit. We are able to use forfeiture funds, but his generosity to the public safety, including fire and police, is pretty well-known in not only this community, but the surrounding ones as well. So with that, I know you guys just want to see the dog, you don't want to hear me talk, so I would just ask if everybody just stays seated. Like I said, the dog is not ferocious, but he can get distracted. We're just gonna do a very basic obedience, and then we will also, he'll show you how he catches bad guys.
Hello, my name is David. This is my partner, Robie. I have people I've seen from my youth enough, went to their school for 16 weeks, ten hours a day. This old lad will be ready to get very much. We'll do some beating. Sit. Good. Here. Down. Sit down. 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 Good. Sit. Good boy. That's it for one. I mean, now. Sit. Good. Oh. Good. Here. 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 Good boy. Fight. Up. Good boy. Sit. Good boy. I'm gonna do some fighting work. You gotta sleep. Officer's gonna run that way. Get him. Get him. Stop right there. Here. Here. Good. Come up. Stand. You're not gonna fight, you're not gonna do anything unless I'm here. That part will be a beating. Put more clothes on him. New clothes. There you go. Back up. Come up. Ready? Good boy. Stop fighting right now. Out. No. Out. Here. Good boy. This is what we do, is called a hand protection. So if I do a traffic stop or something like that, and by myself in the road, nobody there, if I have to do, pat down, make sure you got a gun, knife on him and something like that, I have to do it with a dog. So I would tell him, you're not supposed to move, not doing anything like that. If he pushes me or he moves, the dog will attack. So you're gonna do it the way I tell him to. Stand. Here. No, thank you, John. All right, ready? This is what we call a square attack. Officer's gonna run that way. Let me see your hands, bad guy. Good boy. Here. You're not gonna sleep. Up. Here. 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 Good boy. That's good.
All right, Tommy, that's excellent. You can see the discipline of the dog, and that's just all training. You know, he's really amazing, so.
Our bad guy was Officer Michael Segura.
Good job, Mike.
Good. Hey, I'm gonna let you, if you want time, then let it go. Let me see your hands, bad guy. Let me see your hands. Here. Oh, you guys are, come on. Come. 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 You're not gonna sleep so much. He doesn't want to help the people.
You know, it's such an honor to serve the City of Tarpon Springs. Of course, hey, where are you going, Dobie's? You gonna come home with me?
Ernie. His name is Ernie.
This young man, hey, Tommy, down the Elidoh, they see. I'm talking to you. Get the dog first, Tommy. This young man came from Vietnam, right, Tommy?
Yes, sir.
And you had a tremendous life to get here.
Yeah.
And I love this young man. If it wasn't for, that I'd, if I had a son, I'd adopt him.
You can.
But he is. He has gone through a lot of trials and tribulations in his life.
Yes.
Haven't you?
Yep.
And look what you've done. You're the top police officer among many of them here in Tarpon Springs, and I'm proud to call you my friend.
Thank you.
That's right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
But anyway, that's about Tommy. He's a great guy. Now, you know, the reason why people, somebody made the comment to me, they said, "Why do you buy police dogs?" Well, I just bought another one for Pasco. So this is seventh dog. One thing, I love animals, you know. How many of y'all saw my Lucy? You know, that dog still means so much to me, and I love that dog, and I miss that dog. But the love that I have for animals, but number two, that police dog could save a child's life, could save an officer's life, could find a missing senior citizen. I mean, so important, and that's why I believe in giving back to the community. But we have an excellent police department here. I believe in community policing and fire department, all of these things that are so important to a small town. This is Small Town USA. And Townsend, I changed his diapers. I think I said that one time before. Now I'm gonna be changing his baby's diapers. So, that's it. But it's an honor to be able to be here tonight with you folks and be a part of the community, and I'm always stand forth. And Mayor, I know you need a donation for the playground. I'm gonna give you $1,000. Is that, is that fair enough, Mayor?
Well, we was talking about between $5,000 and $10,000.
You know what? Either that or you don't get anything, Mayor. Is this being recorded?
Oh, you're trying to tell me I should be thankful.
That's it.
Well, I'm gonna get out of your way. I'm gonna call the dog Ernie.
What's that, Mayor?
Dog name is Ernie.
Ernie, not Ernie. We're gonna name the next dog after you, Mayor.
Please do.
Please do. Folks, I'm getting out of your way. Thank you all very much. Appreciate it, and thank you, Sheriff, very much.
Well, we'd just like to thank the police department and the K-9 unit, and of course, Tommy, uh, Dobie, for his generosity, uh, for not only the police department and the dog, but for all he does in the City of Tarpon. So we go to our public comments. Seeing none.
Evening. Peter Lacks, 514 Ashland Avenue. Uh, is this Dobie's four? 'Cause I remember about a year ago, we had a Dobie's three, and do we have two police dogs?
I think three. We have one right now.
So, I know I'm not supposed to, but just curious, I know one went with the one officer, the one we don't wanna talk about, but I don't know about the last dog that was here for a presentation. So we still just only have one?
We have one. He's our dog.
Okay. That's cool to know. I wanna speak out for Mr. Dobie's. I don't know. He already walked out. He's been here a number of times for this particular thing, and he is someone that deserves to be commended and recognized for all of the community outreach he does. He helped the Greek Orthodox Church. He repaved the parking lot. I know he's donated money to various different organizations. He does the Lights of Love. I didn't know anything about the playground, but I'll take $1,000. You know, his check's good. But it, this is a gentleman that we need to let everybody know. We appreciate, uh, his generosity and his spirit. And all I would say to others in the community is that, uh, you can still contribute to the community with your spirit, even if it's not always with dollars. So take Mr. Dobie's example and find a way to get involved with your community to help him in some way. Thank you.
Seeing none, other public comments. We'll go to our consent agenda. Attorney Fees, Thompson, Seismog, Gonzalez, and here in LLP, invoice number 74068. Zenzo Law, invoice number 13375. Special events, the dead, deformed daughters of Penelope, February 23rd. Tarpon Springs Garden Club Plant Sale, March 15th. Greek Independence Day Parade, March 23rd. Gulf Maritime and Music Festival, City of Tarpon Springs, March 29th. A Night in the Islands, City of Tarpon Springs, that's the 2014 season. Uh, six is authorized purchase of trade winds generated and transferred, switched through Florida Sheriff's Association Contract Number 13 dash, 11 dash, 0904. Uh, seven is authorized purchase of a street sweeper through Florida Sheriff's Association Contract Number 13 dash, 11 dash, 0904. Uh, eight is increased file number 130066 dash C dash JJ Electrical Products through the U.S. Communities Purchasing Alliance Master Agreement on Number MA dash IS 1230234. Nine is ratified increase to bid number 130085 dash B dash CM Asphalt Surfacing. Ten is renewed file number 070061, purchase of laboratory materials through State of Florida Contract Number 715 dash 001 dash 07 dash 1. Anything anyone like to pull? Any public comments on any of these items? Chair, entertain a motion.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Roll call?
Commissioner Banther?
Yes.
Commissioner Tarepani?
Yes.
Commissioner Larson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Slattery?
Yes.
Mayor Archie?
Yes. Next, we go to ordinance and resolutions. Item number 11, ordinance 2014 dash 01, vacation dedication, Anklod Isles, first reading.
Ordinance 2014 dash 01, an ordinance of the City of Tarpon Springs, Florida, vacating and abandoning a drainage and utility easement and accepting the dedication of a drainage and utility easement for Lot 15 and a portion of Lot 16 located in Anklod Isles subdivision, providing for findings, providing for recordation in the public records of Pinellas County, and providing for an effective date. It's ordinance 2014 dash 01, first reading by title only. Second reading will be held on February 18, 2014, and will be published in Tampa Bay Times on February 7, 2014, by title only.
Thank you. This is ordinance 2014 dash 01, uh, for application 13 dash 103, vacating and abandoning a platted drainage and utility easement and dedicating, accepting the dedication of a new drainage and utility easement. Uh, the property in question is Lot 15 and a portion of Lot 16 in Anklod Isles subdivision. Uh, in 1999, um, the Lot 15, 10 feet of Lot 16 adjoining was sold to Lot 15 and created a 90-foot wide lot. And in doing so, the platted drainage and utility easements was, there's two adjoining five-foot drainage and utility easements, ended up in the, now would, would be in a buildable area of the lot. So the applicant is requesting to vacate that and then dedicate a new five-foot drainage and utility easement on the property line where it would normally be located. We have received, and just for the record, the current property owners of both of those properties were not involved in that original transfer of the 10 feet that happened, uh, prior to these folks owning it, and prior to the Lot 16 being built upon. Um, we have received all the letters of no objection from the, uh, all the utility providers. Really did not find any issues with what's being requested. The, uh, the, the new dedication will, uh, of the 10, five-foot drainage and utility easement will serve for any future drainage or utility needs that, in, in this, for this particular property. It's a, it says infill lot. There's really not any, uh, very few vacant lots in the subdivisions, mostly built out. Uh, we did mail property, notices to property owners, uh, did speak with the adjoining property owner of Lot 16. He called to inquire today. Just wanted to make sure that he got fully understood what the application was. He did not express any objections to it. So the staff recommendation is to approve ordinance 2014 dash 01, which will vacate the two existing five-foot drainage and utility easements as they're described, and then accepts the dedication of a new five-foot drainage and utility easement along the north edge of the property. And prior to second reading, we will work with applicant, applicant to go ahead and secure the required signed municipal easement, um, that will, we can record in the public records along with this ordinance. Uh, so as I said, the staff recommendation is to approve the application as it's presented.
Any questions for Ms. Fensel? Any, uh, public comments on this item? Chair, entertain a motion.
Move of approval. Second.
Roll call?
Commissioner Banther?
Yes.
Commissioner Tarepani?
Yes.
Commissioner Larson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Slattery?
Yes.
Mayor Archie?
Yes. We go to item number 12, Resolution 2014 dash 04, uh, land purchase for alternative water supply plan.
Resolution 2014 dash 04, resolution of the Board of Commissioners of the City of Tarpon Springs, Florida, approving the reimbursement for certain lands, providing for funding for such purpose, providing for the authorization for certain city officials to execute closing documents, and providing for an effective date hereof. It's Resolution 2014 dash 04 by title only.
Mr. Robertson?
Good evening. Bob Robertson, Public Services Program Manager, Water Project, Program, Project Manager, excuse me. Uh, this item requests Board approval for the purchase of additional property for pipeline construction for the alternative water supply project in the amount of $7,907.87. This effectively widens a strip of land that we purchased with Board approval back in June of 2012 that was designated for the same purpose. This purchase is being executed by way of amendment to an existing agreement with the State of Florida, i.e. the Florida Communities Trust, and Board approval is requested to authorize the city manager and the city attorney to execute the agreement. I'm here for questions.
Any, uh, questions for Robertson? Any public comments on this item? Chair, entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Roll call?
Commissioner Banther?
Yes.
Commissioner Tarepani?
Yes.
Commissioner Larson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Slattery?
Yes.
Mayor Archie?
Yes. And that concludes our agenda for this evening. Chief?
No comments, Mayor.
Your attorney?
No comments, Mayor.
City manager?
I think I'll wait till next meeting.
Oh, okay. Oh, Madam Burke? Commissioner Tarapelli?
I got nothing.
Vice Mayor?
No comments.
Uh, Commissioner Banther?
No comments.
I know, uh, Commissioner Lawson.
I'm commentless.
Hey, I don't have any comments, so we'll adjourn this meeting at 7:10.